Welcome to the first meeting of the year. Happy New Year on Monday, January 9th. The meeting is starting at 7:40 PM. Use the gavel there. First up, we'll have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all forms, for all.
Thank you. Moving on to roll call. All council members are present and accounted for between being remote and in person here. Moving into item three. I'd like to take a moment of silence for State Representative Quinton Williams, who died in a tragic car accident just a few days ago. And I also like to take this moment of silence to acknowledge and send our thoughts to the Easman family. The mother of Lynette Easman, who was a Board of Education member in Bloomfield. Her mother passed away this morning, was fighting a battle of ALS. Please, let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Moving on to citizen statements and petitions.
Robert Furman, A. Hyrum Lane. I'm here today to talk about an entirely different subject than what I've been talking about since July. Talking about Black Lives Matter. I understand full well why the senseless police killings of black men is abhorrent. There's no question about that. But what I think is equally abhorrent are the drive-by shootings of a young girl in her bedroom with bullets piercing her bedroom wall. The shooting of a grandmother fixing dinner for her family. The laughing drive-by shootings that take place on the South Side of Chicago. The stupid, senseless killings that have happened in California. And a six-year-old boy bringing his mother's gun into school and shooting his teacher. These are all abhorrent, and they are major, major calamities in this country. But I think the biggest problem we have is not to try and continue to restrict gun sales or to pass more gun control laws. That doesn't really work. If you take a look at the states that have very strict gun laws, other than Connecticut, it seems to be counterproductive in those states, and that's a problem. The problem is to get guns off the street that are there illegally. And the police have been semi-successful in doing that. But with 3D printing these days, it makes it even harder because now you have a gun that's totally untraceable. I don't have the answer. I'm not sure anybody has the answer. And I would like to see this council go on record with a resolution condemning violence of all kinds. Not just violence against blacks, but violence against everybody. We've had too many mass killings in this country. And unfortunately, we're going to have more. And a lot of it stems, in my opinion, from the fact that we have dysfunctional Congress as well as hate generated from both the so-called conservatives and the so-called liberals and the so-called progressives. If you don't kowtow their philosophy, you're worthless. I disagree with that. I think we're all important. I try and listen to everybody and their ideas. I don't try and knock anybody down. If I disagree with them, I respectfully disagree with them. As some of you already know, because we've had conversations like that. Many people watching this know that also about me. I think it's time for us to have, to start having these civil discourses that this country so desperately needs. And if it starts on the local level, it will grow from there. So I think that's something we need to think about and hopefully get started in the near future. Thank you.
Last call for citizen statements and petitions. Last call for citizen statements and petitions. Last call for citizen statements and petitions. Okay. Moving on to our report from council subcommittees. First up, I will report out on the Administration and Education Subcommittee. I did a comprehensive report out last month. Just wanted to let the public know and my colleagues that we have a special meeting of Admin and Ed tomorrow. We moved it out from last week just to kind of revamp on the holidays. Coming off of the holidays, things to note on this particular agenda would be addressing the housing code. We do have a draft for review. Please, council members, that is in your email. Please weigh in and review and read the updated pieces for the housing code. And I believe we will have a report from the Library Building Committee, including our project managers Downs, while giving us our routine report for admin education. That's all I have to report. Deputy Mayor, Public Safety.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Safety Subcommittee met earlier this evening. We got an update from Jonathan, the engineer, on traffic calming. It was very informative. He shared with us that there have been two information sessions with both the Prospect Street, Woodland Street, and Maple Avenue residents. As many of you know, we've instituted speed humps on Prospect, and there's likely to be some work being done on Woodland and Maple. Jonathan shared with us that there's been $1.5 million approved through a state program for Woodland. And some of that would not only include traffic calming, but hopefully sidewalks as well. We talked, when we heard information about the speed and volume on Elizabeth and Merriam, which they put in the speed humps several months ago. And they've been very effective with the results. And now it looks like the adjoining streets of Harding and Gilbert have seen an increase in speed and volume. And so the Traffic Calming Committee is looking to rectify or find some measures to take care of the Harding and Gilbert Streets. We heard that there is School Street between Cottage Grove and Park Avenue will become one of the focal points of the Traffic Calming Committee. And we talked a little bit about the budget for that Traffic Calming Committee and that there is a general budget of $30,000. And it was suggested by several members of the committee that they may want to look to increase that budget amount based on the concerns and efforts by the town to look at various streets in town. And there was a $30,000 allotment for this year. And we think that there will be more work than the $30,000. But it was a very informative meeting, and Jonathan did a great job of getting us up to speed. On the police front, the chief mentioned that crime activity in the town was low for the month of December compared to the previous month. There were no homicides, no sexual assaults, no robberies. There were two burglaries. There were 40 larcenies, which was down from 62 in the previous month. And again, we're still seeing most of those larcenies are taking place in the Capaco Shopping Center area. Chief mentioned that there were 11 auto thefts, which is almost a double increase from what we typically see. We typically see about four or five, but there were 11. And I believe it was 600 off Cottage Grove Road where we've seen some increased activities. And again, another reminder to our residents to please be careful of leaving your cars running or leaving your keys in the car. There were four DUIs. No citizen complaints for the fourth consecutive month, which is good news. On the personnel side, there were two vacancies, some good news. There were three new hires, three officers started or will start during the month of January. And then there are two recent graduates of the Hartford Academy Training who will be ready at the end of the month, and hopefully we'll see them in uniform in February. Chief talked about a rotational assignment for the three lieutenants, giving them sort of a multitude of experience. And so we're very happy to see that. With respect to the fire districts, nothing, it's unremarkable, notable changes, and EMS, the same thing. So that's all I have to report, and thank you.
Committees on committees.
Good evening and thank you. On tonight's agenda, you will see that at our last committee on committee meeting, we have made some recommendations for the Public Art Commission, for the Bloomfield Recreation Committee, and from the Bloomfield Beautification Committee. At our next meeting, depending on Marguerite and India to give me the next list of investors that will be interviewing or giving us some updates as to their background and to their interest. So I'm hoping that our next meeting, we will have a few more committees that we can recommend to the council. Thank you.
Finance.
The Finance Committee met on December 19th. A regularly scheduled meeting. We heard from our interim Finance Director, no major outstanding concerns. We moved up to the full council, the tax abatements for volunteer firefighters and ambulance personnel, and then a capital transfer for flooring and the replacement of flooring in Town Hall and other town buildings. And so I look forward to the council supporting that. I will meet with our interim Finance Director tomorrow. I'll have a conversation with her as it relates to if we should have this month's meeting. There are pressing issues relative to next year's budget preparation and end-of-the-year W-9's tax forms that need to be sent out to our employees. So I don't want the work of the committee to be a barrier for her to get her day-to-day work done. And so we will have a conversation tomorrow as it relates to whether we will have our next scheduled Finance Committee meeting. With that, that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Land Use and Economic Development. Your mic.
Thank you. Land Use and Economic Development Committee did not meet this past month. We had a couple of special council meetings that had been scheduled. So we wavered due to the importance of those meetings. We do have activity in this committee relative to the Small Business Loan Program that we introduced to council, and it is moving forward with the CIF package of four. We have, this is the Small Business Loan Program. The requested amount is $670,000, and we're hopeful that this and the other three are approved. We also have movement relative to our Bloomfield Development Authority. I am not certain, but I believe there have been 10 applicants. And so we're in the process of just deciphering the movement there, which individuals will be selected. There's a total of seven that will make up this committee or make up this authority. And so we're anticipating those decisions being forthcoming. At this time, our next meeting, which is scheduled for this month, we have to negotiate the dates because there is a conflict. But we will make sure that Land Use and Economic Development does meet this month. And that is all I have, Madam Mayor.
Golf.
Thank you. I don't have much to report from our December meeting tonight, but our next meeting is this coming Wednesday at 6:30. The one item that we did discuss back in December and will be discussed at the meeting on Wednesday, it's regards to the passholder price increase. We're debating whether to raise that price and hopefully looking forward to receiving a budget and some analysis from the management team in regards to whether the committee will move something towards the council, whether to increase the price or not. But I will update the council at the next town council meeting at the end of this month. Thank you.
Community Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Community Services did not meet last month, also as a result of the special council meetings. However, we do anticipate when we next meet to discuss the Bloomfield Summer Bridge Program. Of course, we had a program that was introduced this past summer. And the vendor that was providing basically the services, Goodwin College, has contacted our offices once again and want to develop a better program, possibly infusing juniors and seniors and offering other academic opportunities above and beyond just manufacturing. We saw that there was a need. And what we want to make sure of is that our Community Services Division and Leisure Services do not lose students as a result of us looking or requesting money from Capital Workforce Partners. We want to make sure that they are not impacted in any sort of fashion. So we want to start out early and contact the appropriate resources that will provide those services without impacting our other departments. That is all I have at this point, Madam Mayor.
Trails Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Trails Committee has not met since our last report. We canceled the December meeting, and the January meeting isn't for two weeks. It's on the Fourth, Wednesday at 6 o'clock. We are discussing changing the time and date maybe of our meeting because it's inconvenient for some of our members. Also, we've gone to every other month meeting for the convenience of people. It seemed that would be adequate. There's been a lot of progress on the bike path, and the connection to Terrafill is in process. If any of you have driven 187, you'll see that, is that 187? I guess that's 189. See that they're working on the road to make room for the bike path. And so that's something we have to look forward to this next year. Thank you.
Moving into the business portion of our agenda, into old business. Item 2023-31, Consider and Take Action Regarding Update to Town Ordinance 18-6, Tax Abatement for Volunteer Firefighters and Ambulance Personnel. This was kicked up from the Finance Subcommittee on December 19th. And if the council wished to move forward, we will entertain a motion to move to schedule a public hearing for January 23, 2023. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Council McLary, seconded by Council Mahan and Council Harrington, I think I heard. Any discussion?
Can I apply to council votes as well?
Any discussion pertaining to our item on the agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it, the mayor votes aye, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 2023-33, Consider and Take Action Regarding Capital Fund Transfer, Flooring Replacements and Abatement. Should the council wish to move forward, we would move to accept the proposed changes to the Town Ordinance, Chapter 19, Section 6, Part D and Part J, as authorized by the Connecticut General Assembly Bill 5125 Public Act 1936, and schedule a public hearing for... Excuse me. I have the wrong page in front of me.
I think this item, Madam Mayor, is the transfer of funds from the Human Services SOLA Panel in an amount of $30,000 to the PW floor replacement in an amount of $30,000.
Thank you. Sorry, I was on the wrong page there.
And that's the motion.
All right, so the resolution on the floor. If there is a motion?
So move.
So move.
Moved by Council McLary, seconded by Council Merritt. Any debate, discussion, or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, mayor votes aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Council McLary, for putting me on the right track there. Moving into new business. I'm going to count on my colleagues here from the Committees on Committees. Item 2023-38, Consider and Take Action Regarding Appointments to the Public Art Commission.
I'd like to make a motion that we make the following appointments to the Public Art Commission, Mr. Quinton Johnson and Ms. Wendy Ann Williams.
Moved by Councilor DeBeetham Brown, seconded by Councilor Curtin. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item. Item 2023-39, Consider and Take Action Regarding Appointments to the Bloomfield Recreation Committee. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint the following members to the Bloomfield Recreation Committee, Shenda James, Mark Cooley, Elizabeth Waterhouse, Lincoln Anderson, Lou Bloomenfeld, Paula Jones, and Gail Nolan.
Is there a second? Moved by Councilwoman DeBeetham Brown, seconded by Councilor Curtin. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye, the motion passes unanimously. Item 2023-40, Consider and Take Action Regarding Appointments to the Bloomfield Beautification Committee.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint the following to the Bloomfield Beautification Committee, Roz Capadona, Novella Finley, Henriette Hertzfeld, Sharon Mann, Joanne Mitchell.
Do I have a second? Moved by Councilwoman DeBeetham Brown, seconded by Councilor Curtin. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye, the motion passes unanimously. Moving into item 2023-41, Consider and Take Action Regarding Tax Refunds. Is there a motion?
So move. I move that we move that the tax refunds be approved in accordance with the memorandum dated January 3rd, 2023.
Second.
Moved by Council McLary, seconded by Councilor DeBeetham Brown. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. The mayor votes aye, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 2023-42, Consider and Take Possible Action Concerning Settlements of Pending Tax Appeals. We will take this up in our executive session further down the agenda. Moving into item 2023-43, Consider and Take Action Regarding New Proposed ARPA Community Outreach Survey and Economic Impact Small Business Survey. Is there a motion? Moved by Deputy Mayor Greg Davis, seconded by Councilor Harrington and Councilor McLary. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. The mayor votes aye, any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving into the report from the mayor and the town manager. Just give me a second here to shuffle my papers.
Mayor, did we cover the new business, 2341?
Yes, we did. We approved unanimously the tax refund, sir. So I typically reserve my mayor reports for quarterly or as needed. But I will need to report tonight that the town manager has informed the entire town council of his decision to retire from service to Bloomfield effective August 30th, 2023. We thank you for his service, for his service, and we look forward to moving into a transitional period with the full council to plan our next steps. That is all I have to report out this evening. Mr. Town Manager, you have the floor for your report, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to everyone. Have a couple of items I'd like to discuss. First of all, Happy New Year, Happy 2023 to everyone. And I'm pleased to share the first biweekly report of 2023 with the assistance of the Community Building Leadership Team. It's a printed document that covers topical subjects and various departmental updates. We have posted it on the website. It's an extensive report that we believe is reported in a short, concise, and interesting way, organized by departments. We present this every two weeks or at least coincide with town council meetings. I will not go into the details of the report, otherwise we'd be here all evening. I will say to our neighbors with our new strategic communications initiative in office that we are working on and will soon be producing regular and comprehensive updates to the public, not necessarily those designed, as the biweekly report is, for the town council. So very excited about some of those initiatives. You'll be seeing those sorts of information on a recurring basis and coming very soon. The one item that I would like to comment on, and this is an initiative that has been in the works, I guess you could say, for the past year, but if I said it correctly, something that has been in the works since the beginning of Bloomfield, at least in a long while. Because every community should come together, not just the governing body or the town administration, but with heavy outreach to our neighbors to determine what is Bloomfield's future? What do we want to grow up to be? Different perspectives of how you can describe it. The town council, in the current budget, so going back to almost a year ago, they funded a community visioning effort. And while it has taken us some months to put that in gear and the fiscal year given again until July 1, of course, we have been at work both in designing what this should be and who should help us with it, who would be our strategic partner. So the very first report in this biweekly report, this first biweekly report, is headed Visioning for Building a Better Bloomfield. So what a year 2023 is already shaping up to be in Bloomfield. This new year kicks off with developing Bloomfield's vision. What kind of town do we want to be 20 to 30 years from now? The visioning process will engage neighbors in a discussion regarding what they value most about the community and their expectations for how Bloomfield will grow and change. The visioning process will ultimately identify goals for the community that will contribute to a long-term vision for Bloomfield, including the development of a brand, identity, and slogan that promotes the town and galvanizes the community and its stakeholders. Stay tuned for details, and I mean in just a matter of weeks, that are very soon to roll out. So as the slogan goes, on your mark. So as the slogan goes, on your mark, get set, go. Much more to come.
Thank you.
The other item that I want to speak on, and the mayor will just give me the privilege of a few minutes, and I would like to address it to the neighbors, because I've had a chance to distribute this communication already to the town council and employees, albeit late this afternoon. But after careful thought and consideration, I have provided my notice of retirement effective with the conclusion of the two-year term of my employment contract for August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. I want to talk about why this is such a mixed decision that I've made. And it's about us. The town council, the administration, employees, and the community. But our collective efforts to date have generated accomplishments for which I am proud, including the temporary fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, military rate reduction of one point zero five meals, a two-point-six-million-dollar savings in tax bills for the relief of Bloomfield's property owners. The approval by the town council of the organizational realignment for more effective governmental operations, ratified this past summer. The unveiling of an easy-to-understand and reference five-year community investment plan. The funded projects in the current budget of six million dollars, three times more than the previous budget year. A recently awarded grant, an extensive grant application that we were awarded of five-point-five-million dollars in state-sponsored community investment funds, one of the higher grants awarded. An open, transparent, and focused new budgeting process that we're going to continue in this next year, and we're gearing up for it for the benefit and understanding of stakeholders to promote participation by all stakeholders. Something to be shared in the next few weeks, I'm hoping by the next, uh, business workshop later this month. We're organizing a coordinating schedules. A comprehensive review that was undertaken and funded by the town council of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our procurement and employment practices. We know we have deficiencies. We're going to explore some of the reasons, what to do about it. The launching of organizational and community-based workforce development plan initiatives. A concerted and stronger outreach to Bloomfield neighbors. This is one of the things that I'm most proud of. Lot to roll out. But a stronger outreach to Bloomfield neighbors due to resources of the new Office of Strategic Communications and Governmental Affairs. Funding, we haven't kicked this off, but the council has funded it. A comprehensive satisfaction survey, or likeo-satisfaction, to hear from our neighbors on every aspect of town services and how we can improve. Dedicated resources for capital projects and grant funding, particularly given the new federal infrastructure programs. We are awaiting the results of our first application, one of the first communities in Connecticut, multimillion-dollar requests for infrastructure improvements. Redevelopment of the town center and the Winton Berry Mall with this month's effectuality of a redevelopment agency, effective literally a week ago, January third, with the related tools and powers provided through the town's Economic Development Commission. And once again, very importantly, the New Year's kickoff of the community visioning process that will create a comprehensive unified framework of values, goals, strategies, and actions that will guide both the town's physical, should say, all three of these, physical, social, and economic development over the next several decades. Overall and without debate, as I've said to the town council in my written retirement notice, I am most proud during my tenure of the dedicated efforts of community builders, also known as employees, and the gracious support of the community. Meant so sincerely, our neighbors, for building a better Bloomfield. The best is yet ahead, and I will be here for as long as I can to help us reach some of these milestones. So thank you, and thank you for everything.
Thank you. Moving on to our approval of minutes. First up, we have December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Mayor?
Counselor Curtin, go ahead.
Thank you. I just have, I have some questions, um, uh, I mean, through you, Mayor, to the town attorney. Because, um, obviously, the, the town manager's retirement letter went out today at six-twenty-five. I know that we did have a caucus with you at, um, uh, five-thirty today, but I wasn't really clear I understood, because the, the letter was very hard to. Pardon me? Yeah, the letter was hard to interpret, but based on my understanding, we, the town manager do have a four-year contract with the town. So the reference to a two-year contract is a little bit confusing. Can the attorney please elaborate on that, please?
Town Attorney, you have a moment on the floor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I too received the letter the time you received it. So obviously, I haven't had the time to, uh, review it in depth and, uh, offer my thoughts on the matter. In fact, I haven't been asked for my thoughts, and so you just, um, made the inquiry, but I can assure you that I will study it, uh, review the contract of employment, and, uh, advise the council. I will say that the term of employment was for more than two years, but there is, I'm sorry, there are provisions, uh, in the agreement for an early termination, and I'll spell that out.
Uh, thank you, Attorney Neilman. My only, since this is public, and I would expect it to have this type of discussion in executive session, so I'm compelled to ask one more question. And I think this is a question mostly for the council through the mayor, I mean, the mayor. Uh, when are we looking to, to have discussions about this, uh, in executive session or in public? I think what I'm looking at and focusing on is the future of Bloomfield and its leadership, but I think it's in, it's important to make sure that, you know, someone is in place for that future. I've never seen, uh, you know, in, in a circumstance like this with an agreement where someone says, I'm here until August, but still is a part of some major initiatives. I'm a little concerned about that, so I would say that I would advise that this council will find a way to get together with, uh, Attorney Neilman to have some discussions in how we proceed from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, like you and the council, we received and disseminated this information today. Uh, there will be some information forthcoming. I do have plans to get with leadership, council leadership to discuss next steps. At this point, um, we're going to move into approval of minutes. Uh, December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel DeBeethen Brown, seconded by Counselor McLary. Any amendments to the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? One abstention from, um, Counsel Politis. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the December twelfth, uh, twenty-twenty-two minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Counsel McLary, seconded by Counsel Mahan and Counsel McLary. Any amendments to the minutes from December twelfth? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? The mayor votes aye. The motion passes. As we move into council comments, please keep in mind we do have exec, executive session following this meeting. Counselor Mahan?
I just want to say, uh, Happy New Year to everyone. I also, uh, want to join in extending my, uh, deepest condolences to, um, the close family and friends, loved ones of, um, Rep., Representative Quentin Williams. I didn't know him personally, but from all accounts that I've heard, including, uh, from his fraternity brother, uh, our Counselor McLary, um, it seems to have been a really great man, um, and an even better representative, so just want to extend my condolences. Other than that, I, I also want to say, uh, a thank you to, um, all of my council colleagues. Um, you know, with, with that event, that, that event, seeing that really shook me up and uh, made me realize, one, how fortunate I am to serve alongside you guys, um. You know, everyone here, even if we disagree, I know that everyone here, uh, has Bloomfield's best interest at heart, even if we don't see eye to eye on that. So I want to thank you all for the work that you, uh, put in. I also want to thank the town staff for the work that they put in, the countless hours, um, even being here with us in this meeting, you know, those that we see and don't see. And also the town manager, thank you very much. I was, uh, a bit shocked to see, uh, that letter, but I, I'm hoping that we can work together over the next few months to make sure that the transition is seamless and, um, that our town can move forward in a meaningful way, uh, for a better Bloomfield. So, uh, thank you all, and I'll see you in executive session.
Counsel Politis?
I just want to, um, say Happy New Year to all our residents. Um, would like to just kind of echo, um, most of what Counsel Mahan said, um, and say, uh, let's see you in executive session. Can I?
Counsel Curtin?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Happy New Year to everyone, and, um, I echo some of the same sentiments from Counselor Mahan. Thank you.
Counselwoman DeBeethen Brown?
Thank you. Um, Happy New Year. I do want to say condolences to Counselor Mahan. I know that he lost a family member. Um. I think it's so important for us to take stock. Um, State Rep. Q was an amazing person. You saw his smile way before you saw him. The jarring thing for me was, we were just together a few hours before, right, at the governor's ball, and one of the things that, um, saddens me was I didn't get the time to take the picture um, that I was supposed to take with him. What it teaches us is that life is so fragile and time is so fleeting. So the things that we do and say, let's be mindful that they do have impact, and let's not leave things unsaid. And the things that we do say, let's say them with grace, um, to each other, to our families, to our friends, to people we like and people we don't like. Because once they're gone, they're gone. So, um, my condolences to his family, to his fraternity brothers. I also want to send condolences to the families that lost loved ones on Christmas and the families that have lost loved ones after that, um, had an aunt. My cousins had an aunt pass the day before Christmas and then two days before New Year's. Um, so I think it's just so important for us to reflect. It's a new year. Turn the page. Let's do the best we can for as many people as we can, for as long as we can. Thank you.
Counselwoman McLary? Counselwoman Merritt?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I want to, uh, Happy New Year to everybody. Um, but I want to say how happy I am to hear that we're doing something about traffic calming and sidewalks, both of which we badly need in this town, and two areas that have been roundly ignored for too long. Um, I also like to say how sad I am to hear of our town manager's, uh, planned departure, and, uh, I think he's done a great job, and it's really a shame that we aren't able to hold on to him longer. And, uh, I hope we can work together to make things come out well for the town of Bloomfield. Um, uh, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Harrington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Happy New Year to everyone. Uh, my sentiments exactly from what Counsel Mahan, uh, referenced. Uh, I did not know State Representative, uh, Quentin Williams, but I've heard a tremendous amount of what he has done while he served, even for the town of Bloomfield. And so I send my condolences to the family as well. And also our, uh, DTC chair who lost her mom recently, I want to acknowledge, uh, her. And, you know, we are really very blessed to be here, and so I think some of the sentiments that were, you know, referenced this evening about, uh, us trying to, uh, be more forthcoming with good conversation and the tone in which we present ourselves and our differences. I think we should certainly, uh, appeal to good senses and try to do more of that. Uh, I'm not going on a riff here. I just want to, uh, say it's important. And I hope that, uh, we will do better in this coming year. I also want to express my sadness, uh, that our town manager has decided to retire. Uh, I do also believe that he's done a great job. And, uh, so I, I certainly wish him the best, but while he's here, we want to work him to death, because there are so many things that we have to do, and I know he is definitely here to, to assist us in that process. So, uh, that is it for me, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. A couple of things I'll echo with folks about Happy New Year. And, uh, again, thank you to all of our staff for a tremendous, uh, year last year, a lot of hard work and effort. Um, the town manager mentioned some of the accomplishments, and I think that we shall, uh, be proud of those. Uh, just wanted to mention one thing. I received an inquiry from a couple of residents about the cessation of the free lunch program here in town uh, through the schools, and I know that the town is, uh, or at least the school system is transitioning back to normal school operations uh, through the twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, calendar year, and there were funds allocated for the free lunches, and, uh, I'm hopeful that the, the Board of Ed and others will sort of, uh, look at that. Uh, it's my understanding that although there, uh, the program is ending this week, those families that qualify for reduced or free meals will still be able to apply and, uh, receive the assistance that they need. However, uh, hopeful again that the, uh, the Board of Ed will, uh, relook, uh, into this situation. Uh, secondly, I, I wanted to talk a little bit about the council's directive to the town, the town manager, about, uh, DEI, diversity, equity, uh, and inclusion. Uh, I think that it's important that we continue to look at that as we have external new hires. Uh, I've received a couple calls about sort of the, the commitment that the town has when folks have seen some of, I think, the last four or five hires who've not, um, not have, have not been a diverse pool of, uh, new hires. And so there have been some questions raised, and I just want to, again, uh, raise the issue that it's important that, uh, we do our best to have a, a diverse workforce and, uh, that, uh, our workforce, uh, is reflective of our community as best we can. And, um, uh, I guess that's all I want to say about that for now, but I, I do think it's important that it remain, uh, on the forefront. And I know that the council has talked about it. Uh, we've talked about it with the town manager, and, uh, we had conversations in the budget session about, uh, hiring consultant and all these wonderful initiatives and opportunities to improve on our DEI efforts. And I just want to make sure that we hold true to that, uh, to that goal and commitment. So, thank you.
This has been a very emotional day, um, for me personally, um, because of a lot of different factors. Uh, so you know, while I am truly disappointed in the town manager's decision to retire, you know, while I am truly disappointed in the town manager's decision to retire, I completely understand it. I, my heart goes out to my friend at the end of the dais here, Council McClary. Can't even look at you right now because I'll start up again, and one of my deepest friends, Lynette Easman, who is a huge public servant here in Bloomfield, serves on the Board of Education and has children in our schools. And so my heart goes out to her, our entire town, my colleagues here that I serve with as we embark in a new year. This is, this is a time of renewal and gratitude. And I think we should all reflect on that and within ourselves. And so with that, we will end council comments, and we do have an executive session. And, excuse me, I would like a, to someone to entertain a motion to enter into executive session with the town council, the town manager, the town attorney.
I move.
So, second.
Moved by Council Merritt, seconded by Councilwoman Debethan Brown. We will not, I believe there is no action required from us, so we will not be coming back into the regular session, but please keep it open as we move into that. Let's adjourn in just three more, three minutes, just for us to take a minute to walk around, and we'll dive back into executive session. Thank you. Okay, Steph, did you check one down?